In the first week of our custom Rust server, we've had over 150 people join and we decided to host our first Town Hall Rust server meeting. Where we let people come, sit in chairs, stand when they wanted to give their feedback, share their ideas, how we can make it better. And can you believe in a game that's normally toxic, there was order, people were respectful and they were actually kind? I want to encourage you, if you want to see what it's like to actually have a positive gaming experience, check out this video. This is an experience you're not going to want to miss. Alright friends, I'm going to officially call this meeting to order. Welcome, welcome, welcome everyone to our first ever Rust Town Hall. It's good to have you, appreciate taking some time to be here. We're going to take some time to connect, we're going to talk about some announcements, talk about the server, what's coming next. And then we also want to hear from you guys, okay, we want to get some feedback. We have people of all kinds of different player experiences playing the game. So we want to hear what you guys are hoping to get from the server and what we'd like to be adding to the server. But first, can we give, can we give some loud hurrah's to give it up for Techie and Dubola who have been admin in this server like champs? Can we give it up for them? Let's go! Let's go baby, I like it, I like it, please don't destroy the church, please don't destroy the church. First of all guys, we've got some exciting things to talk about because in just one week's existence of this server, we've had over 150 point people join the server, can we give it up one more time? Let's go! Insane! 150 people in the first week, pretty, pretty crazy. And obviously we're hoping to see the community continue to grow, getting more people in the community. But obviously in our first week of having the server, we're learning so much. And right now our server is kind of like, this is almost like a beta test. We're learning a lot about the server, Techie and Dubola doing a great job, but they're still learning even what their options are, what their privileges are as admins. And so all this is a learning experience, we've got some people have been playing Rust for a long time. And people like myself, some of us who are brand new. So what we want to do tonight, we want to go over some several updates about the server. Techie is going to bring some really cool announcements and updates that are happening in the future. I want to do my best to keep this to one hour, okay? And then here's what we'll do, me and Techie are probably going to bring some things for maybe the next 20 minutes. And then for those of you that are not able to stay for the whole time, if you guys are not able to stay for the Q and A section, which will happen after that, if you guys can't stay for that, you guys can excuse yourself, but at least you'll get the updates. But me and Tech are going to do our best to bring some epic things about the server, alright? I want to talk a little bit about as we start, kind of the purpose and expectation of tonight's meeting. It's our first ever Town Hall meeting, we want to do our best to make the server the best we can for everyone. But also obviously with the understanding that there is no way to make it 100% perfect, period. But there is also no way for us to make it 100% perfect for everybody, right? We've got PVE players, PvP players, we've got people who just want to farm and grow crops. We've got people that want to just ride horses and then we've got people who want to raid everyone in sight. And so we want to do our best, and I emphasize, we want to do our best to be able to make the server awesome for everyone. But I think what's going to need to happen is everyone's going to need to be willing to compromise in some ways to make sure it is a good experience for everyone. Now, since we've kind of got everyone together, I do want to talk a little bit about some of the, like the purposes of this server. Because I know we've got people of all different walks of life, we have some people who consider themselves to be Christian, as I do myself. We've got some people who just kind of stumbled across it on Twitch and people kind of wondering like, what kind of server is this? Is it, is it a Christian server, is it a friend, family friendly server? Is it just a normal Rust server? And I did want to bring some clarity that this is not a Christian server. And what I mean by that, this, this server is not just open to Christian people. We are open to all walks of life, no matter who you are, you're not going to be judged, you're not going to be condescended. And what I mean by that is people are also not going to be banned because they might swear, they might say a swear from time to time. There have been people in the chat that have, you know, said a vulgar cuss word, I don't swear myself. I don't normally even really like to hear it, but I also understand that if I'm going to connect with people, then I'm going to have to be willing to do what Jesus did and be around people who are different than I am. And I know there have been a few occasions where I've seen someone cuss in the chat and someone else will follow up with that, like, hey man, one more cuss word out of you and you're getting banned. And one, that's not even coming from an admin, but two, that's actually just not the really the standards and expectations of the server. We are asking people to keep it relatively clean, right? Because we do have, we do have some young people, right? Vex's son was playing on the server earlier. So for the sake of respect for like the younger ages, we are asking people to keep it clean. But I do want to be clear, if you see someone swear, they're not going to be, they're not going to be, they're not going to be banned because they said a bad word. Now, if people are being toxic and obnoxious, that's a different story, right? We obviously want the server to be enjoyable for everyone, but I just wanted to bring clarity to that, that like, I know some people are like, hey, come play in our Christian server. But just be, just be ready, that if you are going to play in the server as a Christian, not everyone here is a Christian. And you might see some behavior that's different than you. And here's really my firmly, my firm belief as a Christian, I don't expect non-Christians to behave like Christians. But I do hope that Christians will be like Christians, which means we're going to be loving, we're going to be gracious. We're not going to be super rude to people because someone said a word that we don't really say. And so I would encourage you, be respectful, be loving, be kind, because I really believe that this server is intended to be different. And what I mean by that is like, if, I want to create a server that is like a clean-ish, right? Obviously encouraging positive version of the OTV server. And everything that we do, we want to set a good example to the rest of the gaming community. Like people think Rust and gamers are toxic, I want to show them that we aren't toxic. I want to show them that we don't have to engage in drama. I want to show them that for most of us, we can be mature adults and we can handle situations. And plus, I think most of us would agree that like, there's enough crap in the world, there is enough drama in the world that when we all log into a video game, like we're hoping to escape that drama. Like there's enough crap in the world, like Wednesday is inauguration day, like there's enough craziness in the world. When we log on Rust, like we want to laugh, we want to have fun, we're looking to escape all the drama. And so if you could, hey, let's keep this a drama-free server. So do me a favor, if you guys could, if you guys have any issues, because there's going to be issues if you put a bunch of people together. It's just, it's just life, it's just reality. So if you guys have any issues, do us a favor, if you could, please let the admins know. I know in the first week of the server, maybe it's been a little frustrating because there's not always an admin on all the time. So first, please be patient with our admins, right? One, they don't get paid to do this, they are a gamer just like you and they spend most of their, their free time and their gaming time. Instead of enjoying it playing the game, they're actually spending it making the game better for you. So let's honor that, let's appreciate that, but they are actually recruiting more admins because two people can't run the host server, especially since we've got 150 people in the, in the first week. But do me a favor, if you do have an issue, whether it's with the game or with a person, please bring it to the admins and let them handle it from there. Be patient with them, they might not be online or they might not be able to fix it right then and there. They might already be working on another issue. Or maybe they're taking a break because they just worked on the server for the past three hours and they actually want to play the video game like the rest of us do. But if you could, bring it to the admins and kind of let them take care of it. If you've got any proof, I know we had some PVE discussions that we're going to talk about today. If you've got any proof or anything, bring it to the admins, but then just kind of let them take it from there. If you guys see any drama, please do not instigate it or pour gasoline on the fuel, especially in the general chat, right? We want this to be a drama-free server the best we can. And one of the biggest things I would ask before I kick it over to Techie for some of the cool announcements is if you could, please do not involve yourself in situations that you're not involved in. So if there's like an issue between two people or an issue between a group of people and you're not involved in it, if you could, do your best to just not get involved in it. And what I mean by that is I want to bring up obviously an example that happened yesterday that all of us are aware of. We had one of our first PvP raids happen on the server yesterday. And I happened to be a part of it, there's no secret, there's no trying to hide it there, right? A group of us went and we raided Seth, who Seth made his base on the PvP server. Now, there's a bunch of flaws with the system that we're going to talk about that were very unfair unfortunately for Seth. But Seth is a very experienced PvP player, he's in our community, he's here in the room right now, he was in my chat today, talking to him on Discord, he's a great guy, we love him, he's an awesome guy. But he put his base in the PvP server, knowing very well that his base could be raided because that's Rust and he wanted to play the game that way. And a group of us went over and we raided his base, okay? Now, when we were done raiding his base, I came back to the church to work in the building and it was very unfortunate that I found that Seth was in the church painting this picture of Jesus, okay? Now, obviously that seems very poor timing. But the reality is, a lot of people were saying that we knew that Seth was here, that we waited for Seth to start painting Jesus and wanting to raid his house. And that unfortunately simply was just not the case. We made sure that Seth was online, right? We, we knew that he was online because the rule was you can't raid if they're not offline, I mean if they're not online. And we were just having a good time, we went over, we raided his base as anyone in the PvP zone should as well Seth expect. And we even were like shooting straight up in the air, hoping that Seth would come back and we could have a good gunfight, it'd be all handy-dandy, good and fun. And the reality is Seth wasn't upset he got raided, he was upset that some of the PvP systems we have are broken and made it very unfair for him, which we're going to address tonight Seth. But the reality is, for the next 24 hours, people were giving other people a hard time saying, oh, you guys waited for Seth to leave and you guys raided him. And people were, were really making a fuss that weren't involved in the raid at all. And so my point is, people that weren't involved in the situation were getting involved in the situation, saying things that weren't true. And so if you could, do me a favor, if you're not involved in the situation, do your best to just not get yourself involved. Like I said, there's already enough hardship going on in the world, right? We just, we want to come, we want to play video games. And if Seth, right, felt that we had wronged him in any way, he had freedom to come to us, right? I didn't be willing to give him his stuff back just because I don't, really, we're just kind of playing the game. But he wasn't upset that he got raided, he got upset that the PvP systems in the, in the server are broken, which I'll be honest, Seth, they are, right? It wasn't, it wasn't very fun for you for the fact that I was a part of raiding your base, even though I live in the PVE zone. And so you can't get me back, right? You can't try to get your stuff back and that's really unfair. And after doing what we did yesterday, we see that like, dang yeah, that kind of sucks, I wouldn't want to be in the receiving end of that. And so we're going to make some changes to make that kind of stuff more fair. But if you guys could, love one another, respect one another, because I mean, this server is growing so fast that it can either go one of two ways. It can either grow super fast and become super dramatic and toxic or it can grow super fast and become one of the cleanest, most positive Rust servers on the internet. Like if we keep this up, I really believe that this server could literally become the most positive Rust server in the game and we could impact a lot of people. I believe we can do it, but it's going to take all of us being intentional to be willing to compromise, to understand there is no perfect server, to understand our admins are working the best that we can and understanding, hey, it's a video game, we're going to have fun and we're going to enjoy it to the best of the ability that we can. So guys, I appreciate y'all, you guys are amazing. I'm going to kick it over to my man Techie and he's going to give you guys some updates on some decisions we were making, some new cool things that are coming in the future. And then we're going to give you guys some room for feedback because we want to hear some thoughts from you guys. So Techie, my man, take it away, homie.
Alright, uh, first of all, hello everyone, uh, this is probably the strangest church I've ever been in. Welcome everyone to the Town Hall, glad you all are here. Real quickly to address the whole like no drama thing and contacting admins. As Suzie mentioned, like please contact admins if you have any issues whatsoever. Even if it's like the middle of the night and admins are asleep, when we wake up, like I'm checking messages that happened overnight. So that I can contact you all and see if we can fix anything that you guys may have issues with. And just be aware that sometimes the answers that us admins give you won't be the answer that you're looking for and you just got to respect that. We obviously want to accommodate everyone, but sometimes the answers that we give may not be what you all want to hear. Because it may go against your own personal opinion or decision. With that being said, we are trying to add two or three more admin within the next day or two. So we will be gaining some more people. Anyways, uh, to the changes that'll be happening overall with the server. There are some changes that'll be happening immediately and then some changes that'll be happening very shortly. So the changes that are happening immediately are, first of all, raiding in the PvP zone will be allowed even if the base owner is offline. So that's sort of what the normal game of Rust has. Even if a person is offline, you can go to their base and raid it. And so that will not be allowed in the PvP zone, you will not be able to raid even if the base owner is offline. No home invasions of any sort in the PvP zone. This is technically already a rule, but we just want to reiterate it. Please do not enter someone's base and look around, even if you aren't taking anything. Please always be invited into a house in the PVE zone. Sorry, I think I said PvP, sorry. But yeah, no home invasions in the PVE zone. If your base is in the PVE zone, you are not allowed to raid people in the PvP zone because they cannot retaliate. There, there is a exception to this rule. And that is if you do have a second base that's in the PvP zone, then you can raid people there in the PvP zone. But if you only have one base and it's in the PVE zone, you cannot raid anyone in the PvP zone. Hopefully that made sense to you all. The team sizes, um, the team sizes currently are 12, that was increased from the default, uh, which is eight in Rust. We will now be lowering that down to six to hopefully make it better for PvP'ers and anyone that's doing raids. So that'll be lowering down to six as the server grows, we may continue, we may increase that backup. And so those are all the changes that are happening immediately. So with the features that are coming soon. So this whole server, pretty much this entire time that we've been on the server, I consider this to be the server's beta. This is not fully all the features that we want to have in the game and those will be approved upon with, shortly with the new feature of seasons. So we are bringing seasons in, some of you guys know seasons such as like Fortnite and Apex Legends, they all have seasons, Call of Duty has seasons. So we're bringing seasons into the server. So seasons are coming soon and season one will get us out of this beta. So wipes currently are mandated by Rust. Rust puts out an update every first Thursday of every month. And so usually when Rust puts out an update, all the servers have to wipe in order to get that update. That's why server wipes happen, is it's because of not just performance, because of all the buildings on the server and everything takes up memory. But because all the servers want to have the latest Rust update. And so that's why server wipes happen once a month. And so again, that wipe happens the first Thursday of every month. After the wipe that will happen, the first Thursday of February, uh, which is the most recent wipe that's coming up. The first season will start shortly after that, uh, just so that you all are aware. With these wipes, I know people don't want to lose anything and people don't necessarily like wipes. But the nice part is, is we can control everything. So we can, when a new season starts, we can change stuff up. We can change the map size and change some of the, some of the amount of loot that you get, harvesting rates, everything. And give you a different gaming experience each and every time. So with this, I'll get into some of the new features that are coming in season one. So first of all, we're going to be introducing a new map with season one. This map that we're currently on is just a default generated map from Rust. And once we get into a custom map, we'll be able to control everything inside and out. Suzie, I believe, has a picture on his stream as an example of what we can do with custom maps. So we will be interesting, introducing a brand new map with season one. This will include new monuments as well. So I know a lot of you are familiar with monuments that are on most Rust servers such as Launch, Launchsite and other monuments. We can now add our own as well. So we can even build massive cities and make that a monument. Another feature that'll be coming in season one is the currency system. We tried to implement that, uh, right now during the beta. But we had some issues that we needed some more time to rough out. So, but currency system will be coming in season one. With that, we'll be interesting, introducing a market that'll be on the map. At this market, you can use your currency to buy different items, as well as we will be having a community black market. Because I know a lot of you like to build shops and be able to buy and sell different things. And so you will actually be able to purchase a storefront with your currency and then be able to buy and sell stuff within this community black market. Just so you all know, the market will be a neutral zone, so there, you won't be able to die when you're browsing around the market. But that is coming. Another neutral zone is going to be a hotel slash motel. At this hotel, you will have to pay to be able to stay there with your currency. But inside this hotel, you'll be able to have like your own room that you can have some food in. There will be a hospital and some cafes within the hotel itself, so you can get healed, you can have food, get back, get your health back and everything. You can even have your own storage that is there. But with the hotel, again, you have to pay for however long you stay there, uh, which is sort of the catch. We will also have the Colosseum Monument. And the main feature with the Colosseum is the Colosseum will actually give you specific loadouts. So you'll be able, and so the Colosseum will give you specific guns, specific ammo, everything like that. So that every player that competes in the Colosseum will have the same exact loadout, so that's fair game. You have to use your specific strategies and everything to be able to survive. Inside the Colosseum, if you win, you will actually gain credits. If you lose inside the Colosseum, you won't worry about having to lose all your stuff. That is the benefit of the Colosseum, it gives you PvP combat without necessarily risking everything that's on you. And that's one of the main features of the Colosseum. So you'll be able to do PvP, but you don't have to risk everything that you own. So with this server, because we are paying for the server, for you all to be on it for free and everything, obviously. You have to end the game, which all of you present here obviously do. But because we pay for the server, we don't want to be that someone purchases the game, joins our server and then two days later, we say, eh, we've had enough and we turn off the server. So Suzie and I are full on committing to at least three months of running this server. And so you guys will be getting very frequent updates, new seasons all throughout that time. And we will have, we will be putting in at least three months worth of work into the server. I just want to let everyone know, this does not mean that Suzie will stream this game for three months. That's obviously up to him and what he, where he thinks his content is going. I know he's loving this game and loving streaming this game so far, so I think he will definitely continue. But he is free at any, any point in time to change up his content because obviously this streaming is his full-time job and he wants to keep his content fresh and new. With these new seasons, we will also release patch notes so that you guys know all the new features, all the changes, everything that takes place, so you guys can be looking out for those patch notes. And then one of the final new features that are coming is we are enlarging the PvP zone for all you PvP'ers out there. We are going to start with pretty much a 70/30, 70% of the map is PvP, 30% of the map is PVE. This will happen during season one. And towards the end of season one, we will reevaluate if we feel like PVE needs a little more room or whatever, then we can change things up from there for the next season. But for season one, we are going to increase the PvP zone to a 70/30. And so from there, we want to sort of talk through some, some feedback that we've gotten from you all. Some of the questions that you all have asked through the feedback channel in the Discord server, just major questions that all of you have been asking. And so throughout the, throughout the feedback section, if we have something that we specifically want to get your feedback on, then we will call on you, just please stand up out of your chair so that we know that you want to talk. This isn't necessarily the Q and A session. This is just if we say that we need your feedback, then please stand up and we will discuss it with you.
Yeah, if you do have something to say, please.
Obviously due to the delay of push to talk, please give everyone a second to finish speaking. Please do not speak over one another and do your best to respect one another. And so, one of the major questions that we've had is.
There's a weird delay, sorry, let me go ahead and step in one second. So yeah, if you could all be sure to sit in your seats because we'll know you have a question when you stand up. And so we can't see your names from this far away. So we got Photoshop Freak who's actually going to assist us and she's going to walk up to you, she's going to see your name and she'll call on you and then you'll be able to answer your question, sound good? Okay, Techie, back to you, bro.
Yes. Alright, so first major question that we got is making the map smaller. So right now with our map size, uh, it is a little big for our play, for our player base. But we're obviously counting on that the server is going to grow and it has already been growing very quickly. I mean, we crossed 150 players in literally just a week. The server started seven days ago, one week ago. And so for at least season one, we're going to keep the map size how it currently is. Obviously with the new map, it's going to feel a little bit different in terms of the size. But in terms of the number, uh, because there's a measurement with each map that Rust gives. In terms of our measurement, it will be the same sized map as this one currently. And again, if we feel like it's too big, we can obviously reevaluate for season two. Another question that we get is moving high-tier loot to PvP zones like Launchsite. So any high-tier loot in the new map with season one, uh, those monuments will be in the PvP zone. However, we will still have monuments in the PVE zone. We just want so that any monument that you have to put high-tier combat to is in the PvP zone. Because obviously you want the highest tier loot and everything like that. And most of the loot that you're getting in those, in those monuments are mainly related to combat and PvP anyways. But again, do not worry about PVE players, they will have their monuments that they can go to. Another question is, uh, the ability to not lose your team when you lock out. For this, there, that's baked into the game unfortunately. We don't, we can't control you losing your team when you log out. However, uh, we are having clans, so clans will help with that. No matter if you log out or your server restart or server wipe happens, you will stick with your clan no matter what. So currently we do have clans right now, uh, they are already available. But clans will be getting more features with season one. We are still figuring out all the features that we want. And so, uh, we aren't going to announce all those features right now. But more features for clans will come with season one for sure. Bigger stack sizes for storage, that's another question that we get a lot. For this one, we do want to get feedback on from you all, obviously it depends on the items. Obviously, we aren't going to make it that rocket launchers can be stacked up to a million. For simple things like wood and stone, we're more than free, more than welcome to change the stack sizes if you feel like we should do that. So we want to get feedback from you guys. And so if you guys have any recommendations for certain items, any amounts that they should have, you guys are free to stand up and we will happily ask you guys.
Yeah, as a whole, what are you guys thoughts on it? You can just stand up right in your chair. What are your thoughts on increasing the storage and what it should be? Photoshop Freak, pick whoever you'd like and then, uh.
Howdy, um, I do think stack sizes should be increased, but I would caution against 10x or 15x mods. Potentially just a simple 2x on, uh, the items you would use to maintain a base such that we can have larger structures with, uh, longer durations before they decay, thank you.
So, so for example, you're saying like, uh, like being able to store two. So, so for example, you're saying like uh, like being able to store 2,000 stone in one, one stack?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone have, anyone else have any thoughts on that? I'm not exactly against it.
Seth?
I do, um, I was, I was gonna say exactly what he said. Double would be perfect pretty much for what we were get, we got going on. I checked the TC over at the uh, um, land center over there and I saw that like you could barely keep up with it. So double would definitely help with that. But just increasing the uh, like metal frags, wood and stuff, I feel like is okay. But you could also increase maybe double the amount of components that can be held in a stack. So usually it'd be about, um, correct me if I'm wrong, like 10 components. Now it could be 20 components per stack. Feel like that'd be easier.
So Seth, what do you mean when you say components? I'm still new to the game. So like, what does that mean?
Um, metal gears, springs, pipes, everything that uh, you used like to create weapons or other things. So like uh, there's metal gears, pipes, springs, tarp, um, there's multiple component stuff you get out of barrels and things like that.
Oh, okay. What if uh, yeah, I, I think that, I think that's, I think that's great, Tecky. Is there, is there anything that you guys think that we should like specifically avoid doubling the stack size? That would like completely just break the men of the game?
Yeah.
Ammunition.
I mean, yeah, actually that's probably, that's probably a good call.
Ammo, yeah, 100%.
Anything else besides, well, yeah, weapons, weapons we won't make stackable at all. Like.
Explosives for sure.
Oh, true, like C4 and everything?
Mm-hmm, C4, satchels, things like that.
Okay. What, what are your thoughts on uh, um, increasing the, I forget what they're called, but like they, they look like a pen, but they're a big, like high level bandage?
Oh, uh, yeah, I, I feel like that'd be good, yeah. Bandages and stim, um, syringes should be uh, should increase like maybe five or something like that. Yeah, five feels better.
Yeah, cause right now it's two, I think, and it just feels really low.
Yeah, two syringes and three uh, bandages. It's really low.
Take off bandages up to 10, like they don't really do.
Yeah, I'd take bandages up to 10.
I, I like that. 10 for bandages and med sticks, uh, we could just stems up to like five, that's cool.
Five.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else specific you guys think we should avoid uh, increasing the stack size? Okay, cool beans. So it seems like, it seems like everyone's kind of in favor of, of increasing stack size for most resources. I think it's great. So that we can go ahead and uh, Tecky, is that something we could do like in the next few days?
Uh, yes, hopefully. Either within the next few days or definitely by season one. I'll be sure to let you guys know.
Cool beans. All right, continue on my friend.
Alright, next question that we get most often is uh, is a helicopter in the PvE zone bugged? Uh, yes, it is. We are aware of that. I am aware of the issue and I am working to fix it. So that will be solved shortly. Uh, next question, uh, having airdrops only in the PvP zone. Um, we're not 100% sure yet if we can or cannot do that. Uh, we are looking into that. Um, but with that, we are, we're looking into all the possible options, including neutral zone. Uh, for if you call in a drop uh, within a PvE zone or something like that. So we're, we're looking into all the possibilities for that. Expect some more stuff regarding that with season one.
For, for the airdrop, one of the reasons we want to talk about that is the airdrop gets tricky. So just for those of you that are new, cause I'm new, but I've been getting a lot of feedback from experienced players. The airdrop, if you don't know what it is, there's airplanes that drive by and people are not to drop these drops that parachute all the way down the ground. They can be seen from like almost anywhere in the map. And the drops are pretty good stuff, but in normal servers where everywhere is PvP, like people have to fight for it. So like whoever is the last man standing is the one who gets it. But in the PvE zone, it gets tricky because like if someone, like no one knows someone else is going for it. So like 15 people want to go there, spend 20 minutes walking all at the same time, only to find out that someone else was like quote unquote there first. And then it leaves room for like, well, I was here first. No, I was here first. Well, no, I, well, I saw it in the sky first, you know? And it's like, there's no way to know who gets it because in the normal game, like, like the, like this, it's the strongest that survive, right? And so we don't want to like, we're, we're going back and forth because if we only put it in the PvP zone and that sucks for the PvE players who can't get it, especially if a PvE person drops, drops an airdrop for themselves. Cause you can do that. So it stinks to drop an airdrop for yourself and then someone come over and be like, oh, well, I didn't know it was yours. I thought it was a normal one. So it's a pretty complicated process that we're going to be looking for feedback uh, like in the weeks to come. But we can, we're looking to see if it could be only PvP, but also understanding that that is not exactly the greatest solution ever.
Yeah, exactly. So again, we're looking into everything and we'll let you guys know or ask you guys any questions in the next couple of days as we see fit. Uh, next question that we get is higher farm rates. So currently.
They're normally random, Sarah?
Is just normal. It's 1X, there is no increase of it. Um, we are considering doing a 1.5 times farm rate uh, with the new season. Uh, but we want to get your, your feedback on that as well. So if you guys feel like you want to stay 1X, if you guys feel like it should be 1.5, maybe even 2, what do you guys think?
I honestly think uh, a lot of people wanted to stay vanilla and I'm looking in the chat right now. Everybody's fine with vanilla and increase, I think just increasing the uh, like we said before, storage. I think that's just going to help a lot. Cause as of now, if you just farmed and farmed, you wouldn't be able to hold that much. But now you're going to be able to hold double. So I feel like people will farm more, um, and that'll fix their issues.
I see you, I see you. Anyone else have any thoughts on the uh, the gathering increase?
I think it'd be kind of cool to see it increase for the people like it was brought up in chat where if you're a solo player and you're just out by yourself trying to get stuff, you know? Cause a lot, like if you're a PvE player, you're probably base building, you're probably like playing that aspect of the game. So like, you know, see how like, what kind of cool like tricks you can do with electricity and switches and all that stuff. And as the server grows, it's only going to be tougher, like look how big we are now. So the materials with the PvE zone shrinking, the materials are only going to get harder to find for those PvE players that are just looking to do that.
True.
If you increase the rate, it keeps some of the satisfaction there for those PvE only players that not only have a smaller zone now, but now they have to like fight over the same materials, you know, in that smaller.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. And, and one of the other reasons we're thinking about increasing it to a 1.5. Um, I'll be honest, I played on a 2X server and it just felt really, really easy. But a 1.5 might be a good mix because again, we have some hardcore players, we have some new players. We also have different levels of players with different levels of time. So for some of our casual players who just don't have hours and hours to keep on farming, just to speed it up a little bit will not be so punishing to those who just maybe have families or children and they can farm up a little bit easier and enjoy their PvE experience a little bit better.
And so I think, so I'll just kind of talk to that just a little bit. I think the only thing about that though is the purpose of PvP is no one bothering you. So you can do whatever you want all day. And I do understand like right now, really to get stone, you kind of have to kind of move over to the snow area to get some stone. There's stone in other places around the map. And I know we are shrinking that PvE area, but at the same time, it's also something where you, nobody's, nobody's contesting your base, nobody's raiding you. So like that poor me, it's just, I mean, you're already, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just saying, you're already in a place where you're not losing all your materials.
Yeah, his mic is quiet, sorry guys.
Trying to make that one times, if, and the only reason I'll say it is because if it's something that we can't do per zone, depending on the zonage, then if everyone's going to stay vanilla, then we'll stay vanilla. But if, if the PvE um, gets to the 1.5, yes, I think that's a great loot. It's just if we can't, again, that's why you're doing PvE, because nobody is really going to bother you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, honestly, like even, even what, what I like to do a lot is I just like to experiment with stuff. And then if we realize it didn't work, then we can just change it later. So like, do me a favor, put it, put a five in the in-game chat, in the stream chat. If you be open to experimenting with a 1.5X gathering rate for season one. And if we all realize we hate it, we can always just change it back for season two. That's a lot of fives. That's a lot of fives. Tecky, I think the people like it, my friend. Okay. Alright, I think we go ahead and do it, Tecky. The people have spoken. Was someone going to say something? If you stand up, Photoshop will come up to you and call on you.
He's jumping in the corner.
I was just gonna say maybe, um, oh, uh, I was gonna talk. Um, I'm a solo player. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to propose that like the last two days of the server that like, we're allowed to like raid and PvP and all that stuff. Because like, nobody's really going to care about like their resources when there's two days left.
True, true. It's a good point. Yeah, I, I, again, I'm new to this, I'm new to the game, but I've been hearing that like the last two days before a wipe, everyone just kind of goes on a crazy rant because you're all going to lose your stuff anyways. So it's just, it's just like, there's no rule and like everyone's like, alright, let's just start blowing everything up and killing everybody.
I think it'd be lit.
I think it's gonna be crazy, dude.
My jammies?
Go ahead, go.
Uh, I was wondering, is there any way that we could uh, possibly do a even higher um, build amount? Like maybe a 2.0 um, times more uh, for wood and stuff like that?
I, I think we can definitely experiment with it. I think what might be uh, might be great is instead of going uh, such a drastic change, like to double the rate, would be to maybe try the 1.5 for the first season. And if we feel like it's too slow, then we can, we can bump it up even more. But to go, to go all the way to 2.0, to literally, you know, 200% what we have right now would be a big, big change. And harder to undo if we, if we don't like it. That makes sense?
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, and uh, yeah, as I was saying earlier, um, somebody was talking about how increasing the size. I mean, the amount of things you can get um, to 1.5. I put a five in the chat because you said we would experiment with it and I'm open to experiment with it. But as a solo, I didn't find any problem getting the stuff I needed. And uh, in PvE, which most of the people are going to be in here, as Dubola said, a lot of the stuff isn't going to be contested. So you'll be able to get all those resources that he said that would be contested. Um, you'll actually be able to get those. And if you're in the PvP area, which I, I assume only a small portion of people will be, then also those won't be contested as much.
Okay.
So I'm open to the idea of increasing it, but I mean, I don't really want to. But I'm open to it if it's uh, if it's what everybody else wants.
Yeah, well.
But I'm a solo player and I have no problem getting the things.
Seth, I, I appreciate you being open to that, man. I thi, I think one advantage that you might have is you're a very experienced player. So you kind of know like a lot of the areas which they're going to be, you know, the terrain. And, and also you've, you've got a little bit, maybe a little bit more time than some people do. So for people that lack time, they can't spend as many hours getting it. Getting at a faster rate might be helpful. But then again, we might do it and then realize it was too fast and then we'll, we'll crank it back down if we feel like we need to.
Alright.
If I could, Suzie, just real quick.
Sure, sure.
So, so one thing, Matt kind of mentioned this in the beginning, or I'm sorry, Suzie, actually.
Who's Matt?
My bad. Suzie kind of mentioned this in the beginning, um, where our original intent for this server was to pretty much be, for lack of a better term, all things to all people. Essentially making it so that anybody that comes on the server can enjoy what they want to do. They could plan their week, they could plan their day. But this also means, um, this also means why these feedbacks and these meetings are so important. Um, because if we have tons of PvP people, um, and they're out, they have an outcry, but you also have PvE people, again, we can try to cater what we can. Obviously, we're not going to make everyone happy. So um, it, it's, it's why we have these meetings, so that we can get to a place to where everybody can enjoy what they have. So just know, anything that you guys are saying, I know that Tecky has a document, he's already adding things to. So even if it sounds like we're not taking it into consideration, it's being taken down. So I did just want to mention that, just so you guys are aware.
Cool. Alright, cool. So it sounds like we'll, we'll bump it up to 1.5. Uh, so Tecky, if I'm incorrect, we'll keep things the way they are now and that change will start in season one, season one?
Correct.
Cool. Alright, let's go for the next item in the agenda.
Alright, uh, question that uh, we came up with is should we change with season one, possibly what people spawn with? I know when people first spawn in, in the server, it's really hard to find food uh, and things like that. So we're wondering if, when people spawn, if they should spawn with not only the rock and the torch, but maybe some food at least. Um, possibly even a wooden spear already, or if we should just leave it how it is in plain old vanilla. Uh, so that's something that we want to get your feedback on as well.
Um, I'm open to that. I, I like the idea of uh, spawning us with food. Because if you spawn, the first thing you gotta do before going out of your base or just out into the world is you gotta heal up, because you spawn with 50 HP. So spawning with food and you start with 25 like uh, hunger. So spawning with food would be really good. Spawning with weapons, I don't really know about because if like uh, if you're just walking around and you get into a PvP fight and all of a sudden there's a naked, he just spawns and throws a spear at you, that could be very frustrating or just some random uh, come up with a spear and not work for it. But I mean, that, that's just my thought.
It's a good thought, it's a good thought.
Could we, instead of changing what we spawn with, just set our spawns to be full health and, or full fed, full water, full health, and then you just kind of go?
I like that too.
Oh, that's big.
That's actually a better idea, yeah.
That's kind of big brain, bro.
Uh, so we can look into that. Uh, I don't know if that's possible or not. I would look into that. That is a great suggestion though.
If that's the case, if we can't, we can just give everyone like six pumpkins on spawn. And they can just eat all the pumpkins.
That would give them all the hydration, the help they need.
Plant mama.
I love the delays. Oh, plant mama? I'm not sure for a mic.
They might commute it.
Not sure for a mic, I tried to talk to her earlier before the meeting and her mic wasn't working. Why don't we uh, Amanda, why don't we maybe pick another person? We'll, we'll come back to her in a second, see if her mic can work.
Charles, it is.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I just had a thought and I don't have a lot of experience with this game, so stop me if I'm wrong here. Um, I definitely agree with the spawning with food. Um, but also if there's a way to limit where people spawn in or, you know, have their very first time spawning in on the server to the PvP, or not, sorry, to the PvE area, that would limit the amount of random knicks, you know, getting in the way of PvP fights. Um, and then if that were the case, I think it might be a good idea maybe to give them like the very basic tier one spear. Because if you're, you're spawning and you're trying to find your friends or get to somewhere and you run into like even, even a boar or like even the weaker enemy or animals can wreck knicks. So I think it might be a good idea to have just a very, you know, low tier spear. But I don't know, I'll leave that up to you guys who know a lot more than I do.
Yeah, so um, with season one and the new map that we will have, uh, we will control where the spawns are. And so uh, when you first spawn, you won't spawn in the PvP area just to make sure that you don't get killed within five seconds. So we are going to change that so that you spawn in the PvE.
So yeah, maybe having like a wooden spear, something very basic, like this, just throwing this out there. I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but that might prevent people from like getting destroyed by boars when they first log in. If they're brand new.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be good.
Just a thought.
Anyone else have any thoughts on uh, spawning, spawning with food? Okay. I was promised cake.
Vex?
Uh, one idea that we can do with that is actually kits. Uh, you can uh, set up kits for, uh, you can put them on timers that you can. you can put them on timers that you can claim them every so often. And you can even have like a kit that you claim one time per wipe. It might help you even get started on building a small base.
Interesting. That's, that, yeah, that's something, yeah, that's something we could definitely think about.
We'll look into that for sure. Yep.
For sure, yeah.
Um, yeah, uh, I was gonna save this till after till we get to like the more off topic questions, but since he asked that, um, one of the iss- one of the things is how you said, uh, you were gonna keep the server open for, um, like you said, three months. And I feel like one of the ways that, uh, the servers make money is by use, using this kits. So people can purchase tiers of a kit, um, maybe just like $5 a month or something and they'll, uh, it might not even $5 a month. It might just be $5 like done. But, uh, $5 and you get, receive a kit and then you'll always receive that kit. That will allow you to pay for the server and allow us to play on the server longer. Not anything crazy, because obviously if somebody just like spends like five bucks and they get an AK or something, that's not really, uh, I, that's not fun at all, but.
Uh, I'll.
So let me just stop before we move any further.
Sure.
Oh, sorry. Um, so what Seth is, is saying, it is not necessarily saying pay to win. I think I already know what Suzie's gonna say, but, um, he's not saying it's pay to win. He's basically just saying it's, it's a basic kit that gives you spear, maybe some food, and, um, maybe a blue, a very basic blueprint. It's nothing to a place to where you start out and you have an M249. That is not what we're saying, or at least what he's saying. It would strictly be something to where, it gets your feet off the ground and then you can move on. But I, I think I know what Suzie's gonna say, so I'll let him get next.
Yeah, no, the only thing I'll say, you know, is, I, I appreciate the sentiment Seth, because obviously I'm, I'm the one that pays for the server, so I, I do appreciate that. But my, my deal is I'd like to keep the server free for everyone. Um, I mean, if there was like skins and stuff that people could buy, um, but normally for me, I, I'm just, I'm not normally a fan of paying real li- real life money to get, any sort of actually usable in-game events that can help me in any way she perform. So that, that's probably something we wouldn't do, not only for the advantage, but just because I'd like to keep the server free for everyone.
Alright.
I would just like to amplify what Vex said about the kits being superior to the spawn option as it prevents bed spawning. Thank you.
Oh, it's true.
Rusty?
Uh, hi. So, um, about the pay thing. Uh, I'm not sure if this is like an option, but there is a command that you can use to skin weapons, which just unlocks basically every skin, I think specifically inside the server. I'm not sure if you can make that, uh, pay thing. But maybe if you made it like a dollar to have that command unlocked, some people might do that.
That's good, yeah.
That's actually really cool.
Yeah, we, we are looking to have some.
Like they go up to like $500.
That's insane.
Yeah. We are looking to have some skin features with the new season. So we're looking into that for sure.
Oh man. Okay, yeah, so we'll, uh, we'll look into, uh, you know, spawning people with food, what that's gonna look like, making it fair, or, or this whole kid idea. We'll continue to explore that, but we, we appreciate you guys' feedback in that area. For the sake of time, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, the next, I think we have one or two more and then we're just gonna do an open Q and A. Techie, take it away.
Alright, uh, so first, um, random question, because this was brought up a little bit earlier. Um, this is no need for you guys to all stand up and talk, but type a five in the chat if on like the last day before a wipe or new season, you would like to just go all out with the server and just have all that war or something like that. I just wanna see how many people want.
Just to clarify to the PvE years, the ne- the next day you are going to lose everything anyway. But if you are in disagreement, you know, please let us know, because, you know, we want the PvE years to enjoy their last day as well. But it might be just a fun, crazy shenanigans to be a part of since the next, the next day, everything's gonna get wiped anyway. I, I do, I personally do think it'd be amazing.
It seems like a lot of people.
I'm putting a five in the chat.
Alright, thanks. Good to know. Uh, so next question that we have is, um, choosing people to only spawn in the PvE zone. I bet that's highly favored that you want to spawn in the PvE zone when you start out, um, after server wipe or on a new map or whatever. Um, so again, just type in the chat if you obviously want that. Uh, so that when you first spawn, when you spawn in the PvE zone and not the PvP.
Yes, I agree. PvE zone. I think that's a great call. I think it's a great call.
I think that's, uh, that's the majority there. Uh, and then final thing, uh, Roman's asked about, um, having more animals in the server. Uh, I believe we can control that, so we'll be looking into that. And hopefully with the new map, we will have more animals and have full control over that. So we are looking into that. Uh, other than that, that's all the main questions that we have. Uh, so I'll hand it back over to Suzie and he will conduct the whole Q and A session.
Yeah, so I, 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 what I wanna do is I wanna give you guys opportunity to ask, uh, any questions or give any feedback. Um, and I think what I'll go ahead actually is kinda started off with a question I feel like some of you are already asking in the chat. Uh, we mentioned earlier that we wanted to limit team sizes to six. And the reason we wanna limit team sizes as a whole is because like, for example, right, there was like, more, there was more than 10 of us that raided Seth's base, right? And so like, then when we were done, we're like, ah, well, he's a solo player. There's no way he's gonna retaliate and all like 13 of us. So that probably was unfair. So we, we're trying to make it smaller, like way smaller, but maybe six is still too big. But we wanna keep a few things in mind, right? So what would you guys say in your feedback is a good size for PvP? And then also a good size for PvE, cause right, so we did a large oil rig yesterday. I'm relatively a new player. And I feel like four would have been too small, but whatever we limit the party size to is whatever we limit party size to. So let me, let me, let me ask a question in chat. What would you guys' recommend, recommendation be the size of PvP? PvP, what would you recommend be the maximum party size for PvP for the current size of our server? I'm seeing a lot of fours. I'm seeing some fours, some sixes. And obviously keep in mind, we're open to growing that number as the server grows. So right now, you guys know there's like normally 30 people on at a time. So like 6%, I mean, that's like, you know, that's like a fifth of the entire server in one party. So we're getting, we're getting kinda, we're getting kinda mixed feedback. We're getting a lot of fours and a lot of sixes. And so that's, that's good feedback to get from everyone. What would you say now would be a great size for PvE? PvE size, I mean, you can bring as many people as you want, but what we're talking about is limiting the actual grouping size of your team. Like when the people turn green, how many green circles do you wanna be able to have in your party? Yeah, I agree. I, I like big PvE groups. I like PB, but it's tough because then if we make the party size 12, then there's no way for us to really monitor our people PvP-ing in the groups of 12, besides I'm literally getting caught. That's the tough part.
Yeah, that, that's when somebody would have to report.
Yeah, you basically, well, so here, from a, from an admin standpoint, you guys really have to know, like, so we check the logs on a regular basis. But also you would have to know that you're being spectated a lot in PvP. So if you want, if you wanna spit, obviously you're gonna have a specific size and you're gonna have a report. We're working on a ticket system in Discord, uh, for admin tickets, so that if anyone needs to report something, that they lost something, we're working on that. Um, but, um, we would be just as strict, if anything, with the party sizes when we implement them. Um, so it, it's one of those things where we want to try to stay on that, but just know it's like, if you're reporting and you're seeing that, um, we're, we're not gonna talk about like band times or kick times or anything like that right now, but there will be repercussions.
So l- let me say this, because I know we, we got some mixed feedback between four and six for PvP. You know, the server is growing very rapidly and I know we've had a small PvP base. Um, but I think a part of that is for two major reasons. One, we've got a lot of new players who haven't really gotten into PvP yet. But two, the experienced players that thought about playing on our server, then saw that some of our PvP standards kinda, kinda were unfair or it didn't really work very well. So we kinda, you know, deterred them from playing. I think with some new improvements and a growing server, PvP is going to increase. So what if we kinda meet in the middle for everyone's desire of, some said four, some said six. What if we just met in the middle, did five? And again, we can experiment for season one. And if we feel like it's, it's, it's bad, then we can readjust it. Or if the server blows up and there's 400 people, because the next purchase I'm gonna make is making the server allow 400 people on at the same time, which is gonna be huge. So then, you know, we'd obviously need a bigger server, but put a one in chat if you're agreeing, if you guys are down to experiment with five for season one and then we'll re, we'll reassess from there. Okay, cool. So then here's what we'll have to do then. Here's what we'll have to do then, because there's really no point to limit PvP sized groups. Right now, we're at 12. Um, so here's what we'd have to do then. We could keep PvE groups at 12, so you could have your, you know, all your friends in the same group and be able to team chat and talk and socialize. But the PvP limit of five would have to be an honor system. Because technically you'd be allowed to bring 12 people in your group. It would have to be an honor system, where if you get caught bringing more than five people, there'd obviously be repercussions. You know, we, we could talk about a weak ban, you know, that, that, that sounds a, sounds like, that sounds a little long, to be honest. But we could talk about what the repercussions would be, 24 hour ban may be. But if we're gonna do this, we could PvP in groups of five. But if you get caught doing more than five, then obviously there'd be some kind of repercussion for that. So I, I, it seems like everyone's cool with that.
May I say something?
Sure thing.
Are the admins able to see who's in a clan? Um, because we could use the clan system for PvP and the, uh, the actual built-in game for, uh, PvE. So I, I know a lot of us aren't using the clan system, so that's, that's one way we could actually use it.
Techie, wanna grab one?
So you can see how many people or what people join one?
Yeah, so that's, uh, that's a good suggestion. Um, we do have access to see all that stuff. Uh, and so, uh, uh, that, yeah, that's, that would probably work very well. The only difficult part is, uh, making clans revolves around like commands that you all type and everything. So it'd just be when you're making these groups, you have to specifically, one person makes it and invites everyone all. And then when you guys are done, you gotta remove everyone. So it's, it's a bit of a process. Uh, but we'll look into that, um, and Sean says he has a suggestion to maybe help with that, so.
Sean?
Yeah, if it's okay, what, what I was thinking for that, um, because usually with PvE players, you know, they like to stay with their friends in their own dedicated bases and they're usually not changing that around all that much. What about having the clan system for PvE? And that way it's just like one and done, everyone's in the clan and you don't have to mess with it. And then have the team system for PvP.
That might actually be better, yeah.
That's not a better do.
So yeah, that, that definitely.
Actually break the rules in PvP.
Yeah, that, that may be better for sure. So we'll, we'll definitely look into that. That's a great idea and great option. So thank you guys.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great feedback.
Mama?
So when you talk about having a team limit in PvP, that you're just talking about the green people that are on your team or the amount of people that you can run with?
So we're, yeah, we're talking about the amount of people that you can actually like run with. So what we don't want is like, hey, you, you have five green people, but then you have another group of five green people and another group of five green people. So it's like, oh, well, our team size was five, but yeah, really, but really you brought 15 people though. And so because the server is still small, we're trying to see what's best about limiting, um, team sizes. Um, some people just choose to play alone and if that's your decision, then unfortunately that's your decision. But a lot of people are brand new and don't know each other yet. And so we just don't want people to keep getting raided by 15 people because they didn't make any friends yet. But yeah, just to be clear, it's not like how many people you're playing with total. It's, I mean, it's not just the green people in your party. It's the total amount of people you're working with together in a PvP zone, which would be five.
Plant mama?
Only two problem I have with that is on the reverse, is that you're hindering people from inviting their friends to the server.
That is true. Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
So my question, so just with this, so, so here, so here kinda is, is one thing, cause you're kinda, it's kind of a twofold thing. Because one, we're talking, yes, squad size, but normally when you're talking about the five people, we're talking about being raided by five dudes, right? But then having 10 people, 10 of your friends that are in your base, helping you build your base. Uh, so we can discuss this later, but essentially having a raid size max of five. But your buddies in the PvP zone, you just can't go out with more than, more than a stack of five.
Yeah.
I think is what he's saying.
TJ, I'd love to get your feedback on this, because this is ideally what we had in mind first, but what if we made the, the limit size five? Uh, it still doesn't fully answer your question, but limit size of five for like going out and specifically raiding a base? But what if we left it unlimited if you guys just wanted to ro- roam around PvP zone and kill people?
So like, I'll just put that in like a real life situation. I have six people in my base and, oh, sorry. Beth, you have to stay back because we can't violate the rule. Like, how would, how would you feel if you were that person in that situation? The only reason I bring this up is because I've already brought two people to the server and I'm already in a team of three, four of us. So like, that's already like obsolete for us to work together as a team.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I definitely understand that for sure. But you know, with that being said, like, an- anyone could, could say that, like, oh, well, you know, I brought 15 people to the server. And then we'd have to just start increasing the sizes too big, because I mean, right now we have the most people we've ever had on the server, which is 44. And so like, if we did what we did to Seth all the time, it would just be so completely unfair for like 99% of the server. And so it was fun for us, but it's just not really fun for like really anyone else. And so finding that, that number is gonna be a hard part, because I know people wanna invite their friends, they wanna be able to go in big groups. But then balancing is the hard part we're trying to accomplish. The balance is the tough part. You know what I mean? So it stinks, cause yeah, but it does stink, cause yeah, some, somebody needs to get left behind, essentially, and that, and that's the, no matter what number we pick, somebody gets left behind. Cause even if we did 10, then someone is like, oh, but I got 11 friends who gets left behind. So it's just, it's tough picking out that number. You know?
Mama?
I have a question.
Okay, so going back to the, uh, 70/30 from earlier. So if everyone knows that the majority of the server is PvE, by having 30%, it's gonna overrun the 30%. I mean, having it 50/50 now, it feels really crowded in PvE at times.
I think it feels a lot of that way in the PvE, because everyone chose to be really near each other. But there is a ginormous portion of the map that most people don't visit. Like around my base, W14, there's an exuberant amount of people. And so because of that, our area has no resources, there's never animals, all the plants are taken. But if the game was being played more properly, the bottom half of the map would have felt, I think, a lot healthier. Does that make sense?
But the problem with that, with Suzie, is you're the streamer and everybody's always gonna circle like around you. So if you build your base in the PvE zone, you're gonna run into the exact same problem when you reduce it to 30%.
I, I do see that, but at least hopefully most of the people in this room would just know, if you wanna have a better gaming experience, it'd be better for you to not live near me. Otherwise, you're gonna have no meat, no plants, no crops. You know what I mean?
Because.
Mumbles.
I think people were like, well, I wasn't living near you, but I think like the area you're living in is like the most plush area, like the rest of it is desert. Like there's a bunch of desert and then you got this plush area and then you got mountains that are kinda hard to build into. You can't drive a car up the mountains, you know, it's kinda, so like the area that's here, like right here, is very, very nice and that's why people are here. And it's, it's a small PvE area. But if you, if you put it like, you know, 30% PvE and it's all desert, then you know, we're all screwed, because I can't, I can't grow my crops in the desert, you know, type stuff.
That's true.
Right, so I can kinda play a little bit of de- devil advocate to that. There's fresh water in the south, in the desert. Uh, so I have a guy who literally has like 12 pumpkin farms, 12 corn farms, literally tons of food down there and resources, all because he chose. So if you guys look right now into I21, J21, K21, that's all freshwater. That, so anything that is closed off in the land of mass by sand, normally is freshwater. So like that river. So like that river, that in area, that's also freshwater. The, the thing, the thing following up with the, with the PvP is you have. So for any, just remember the rule is changing. So for anybody to do PvP, they have to, they have to be. Vice versa for PvP. In PVE, you can't go play PvP. So when you guys talk about the thirty percent as well, you know PvP changes are coming to the PVE area with the exception of PvP. So all the changes that are happening in PvP are happening in PVE. Nobody's getting the short end here. The only difference is that it's going to a seventy thirty. I'm sure that we're going to talk about how we can allocate different things to try to accommodate. But again, as we mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, we're, we're trying to come to a compromise to really try to make it work.
Yeah, and we're gonna.
Going back to uh the beginning where you didn't want to go to two point O farming rates for doing one point five to see how it goes. We couldn't thirty percent be kind of extreme in that regard. I mean, could a sixty forty maybe be tried to see how that is and then season two, good on the seventy thirty if, you know, it's, you know, still too big of a PVE zone.
Yeah, I mean, with the seventy thirty, it's mainly, it's mainly a test for the season one. So if we find in season one that seventy thirty is too big and too big or too small or whatever, we can obviously change it. But also keep in mind with season one, we have a custom map. So issues that you all were saying with like having the desert and not being able to like build up and mountains and stuff like that, we'll have full control over the map and so we can make it certain biomes are in the PVE area that make it more uh more helpful to build in.
Records?
Uh my only question, I was going to ask if you had control during a season of what you can make a PvP zone and what you can make a PVE zone.
I'm actually not sure.
Uh elaborating on that. What do you mean?
Like, can you switch mid?
Like in the beginning, everyone's kind of afraid of PvP. No one has great weapons or anything. So I'm saying is when a season starts, you can make the PV zone bigger and let that be known. And then like after the first week, then you switch it to the seventy thirty?
Gotcha. I see what you're saying. Um technically we do have control over that, but I, I feel like the majority of the player base won't like that because they won't necessarily like that after a week, everything just changes on them. Um I would rather want to sort of throw them into the deep end. I know that sounds harsh, but it just makes it so that you get used to it faster.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
And the unfortunate part about changing like mid-season, I know it seems simple in concept, but then what if someone who like was hardcore dedicated to only being PVE? Then the part that we want to like cut out and make PvP or vice versa, now their base is not in their desired zone and they spent, you know, forty-five hours making that base. And now it just got changed on them. So that wouldn't be very pleasant for that. So that's why we're recommending whatever we choose from the very beginning, like we would stick with. Um I do see a lot of validity to what uh someone said a minute ago, like, why don't we just start maybe less extreme and then try it? And, and I'm totally down for that, but we also got to understand like fifty fifty going to sixty forty really isn't much of a change to actually make too much of a difference. I know seventy thirty still seems pretty extreme, but if you open up your map and you look at how big this map is and how big thirty percent is, thirty-five percent might be, it's still a lot of space. And again, you're still able to go to the PvP areas. You're just going to be a little bit of a, little bit of, you know, a little bit of a risk. But going sixty forty, it just wouldn't really feel like much of a difference. It wouldn't really feel like too much. But I would be open to experimenting, Techy, with thirty-five sixty-five. So it's kind of like a middle ground and a little bit less, but, but even like some of you are thinking right now, well, five percent is not much a change. But then also five percent is really not much than ten percent, which is what sixty forty would be. It'd just be a ten percent change for both zones. And so, Techy, I, I'd be cool. Would, would you guys put a one in chat if you happy with starting out with a sixty-five thirty-five? Then we can feel it from there for season one, just to kind of, kind of give it a little bit more of a leniency for both ends. Okay, seems like a lot of people are in favor of that. And then we'll reassess if we feel like PvP is too big or PVE is too small, whatever it might be, then for season two, we can change, but we, we won't make such a, such a drastic change going, going into season one. Okay, cool beans. All right, now, yeah, go ahead.
Um earlier he was talking about the desert, the mods of the, uh, yeah, the mods, they have full uh control over what is actually what. So when they're getting the custom map, they could make it to where the PVE zone is a better place to actually build. So nice plains like in W fourteen or something like that. And then in the PvP zone, it could be more desert um or snow where it's a harsher climate. So that might actually be a thing to where uh a lot of the PVE zone, not all of it, because of course you get materials from the snow. But a, a lot of the PVE zone should be like plains for people to actually build and stuff.
Yeah, and we, and we just want to clarify.
Our goal with the new map.
We, we, we're, we're going to make sure that whatever thirty-five percent the PVE makes is the best thirty-five percent we can give you. Like, we, we don't want, I know it seems like we might be neglecting PVE because we're making PvP bigger. But I want to promise you, we're going to do our best to make that thirty-five percent the best thirty-five percent we can give you. For sure. All right, well, uh, go ahead. Yep.
Yeah. So I wanted to circle back to something you said earlier and then tie it into something I wanted to kind of ask. So the statement earlier, I forget who made it, was basically um the PvP monuments are going to drop the better loot because ideally that's what it's for. Um I kind of disagree with that. You would ideally also use that gear for doing uh PVE encounters like oil rigs or the ship or whatever. So I kind of wanted to bring a counterpoint to, there is reasons why PVE players would want some of the better gear without necessarily just for PvP. Um and then tie that into when you get to doing the custom map, um kind of Suzie, I mean, we, you know, we, we, we play WoW. So if there is, you know, kind of a possibility for having like whatever the new map has for a raid, like a oil rig or whatever it's going to be, if we could have one of those in the PVE zone so that, you know, it's kind of like that raid in WoW thing, right? Like you go into a raid, you're not getting killed by Alliance. You just go and do the raid against whatever you want.
I actually, yeah, that might be good to put small oil rig in um the PVE zone maybe.
That's pretty good.
To give them something to actually go to if they don't want to go to a PvP zone. So small oil rig, maybe PVE and then large oil and cargo should only be PvP. Cause you can get freak locked crates from cargo rig.
Yeah, so again, with the custom map, we're gonna really try and make it so that PVE also has monuments and things of that nature that they want. Uh and also raids, especially raids, because raids are a, a, a good time uh with friends to just have some PVE encounters um in that sense. Uh in terms of having it so that like some of the monuments you want as a PVEer. Um again, keep in mind that not all monuments are going to be in PvP. There will also be monuments in PVE for you guys. Uh but some of the higher tier stuff will be in PvP because it's more of a contested area. But with that, keep in mind also the market that'll be in the new map. Uh so that way, even if you don't necessarily want to go into the PvP area, you could at least go to the market and maybe use your currency to get some, at least some of those items or even stop by like a community member shop. Um I'm not saying necessarily that the market, the NPC market or whatever uh will have like the best stuff ever. Uh they'll just have basic essentials, but then the community markets, they may have some better stuff. So, yeah.
Cool. So guys, for sake of time, why don't we go ahead and take, uh, take one more question or feedback or idea? And remember, even though the town hall meeting is ending in a few minutes, it doesn't mean that your feedback ends. We have the hashtag Rust feedback category in the Discord that we definitely want to encourage you to use, but we'll go ahead and do one more question. So Photoshop, why don't you go ahead and pick someone and then uh?
Uh Vexed. Vexed.
All right, I've got some recommendations for plugins that we might want to try. Uh one is uh Instacraft, so you can craft big stacks and not have to sit and wait on them. Another is B-grade, so you can place and upgrade at the same time, making building bases much quicker. And then uh adding the home teleport system. So when you're out of combat for ten minutes, you can teleport back to your base. It makes travel a lot easier.
Wow.
Yeah, those are good plugins.
Yeah, if you could actually.
All right, we're going to look into others.
If you wouldn't mind on Discord, if you could message Techy a list of all your recommended, um, I think called the plugins? And then we could look at those because some of those sound pretty cool.
Actually, the, the TP plugin, he said, I, I, a lot of people don't want that because people can actually abuse it. So like if they're getting raided, they're able to TP to a different base, they loot out of it. So I, I think that one we may leave out, but besides that, the other.
You can uh, you can actually set settings in it to where if there's damage to the structure, it prevents uh teleportation.
Okay, well, maybe that, yeah, that'd be something good then.
That's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. Awesome. Well, that was, that was pretty.
I have one fine. Uh it's a, it's a quick question. Don't worry. Um my question is, is I haven't seen the map, but from what I've heard, it's very different and a lot of people don't like that. Is the map set in stone or are we able to like maybe comment on the map and see if we can find a different one? Cause I, I personally haven't, haven't seen it yet, but a lot of the things I've heard, it sounds uh very different.
Yeah, so that map that you guys saw, Techy was just kind of showing an example of what we can do to change the map to prove the point that it can, it's going to be a different gaming experience. So it's not going to feel like, oh, I, well, I built a base on this exact spot and now the map's reset and it's going to be the exact same game again. We just wanted to show like the drastic abilities that we have, but that map is, is not the map we're using. But Techy, I did believe you said you're taking some inspiration from it, correct?
Yes, we're taking inspiration from that, but that's not going to be the exact map. Uh and in terms of like, things are too different or whatnot, keep in mind, most of the changes that are happening are just the overall shape of the map and adding a few more custom monuments to make things seem more fun and everything. Uh but nothing too drastic or whatever.
And, and then ju- just an update that me and Techy talked about earlier, two things I want to mention is one, the map's not going to change very often just because it is an exuberant amount of work for Techy to do to make a whole new map. So it probably would only be once every uh few months. It wouldn't be too frequent. But then also just be understanding to be, you know, we got to compromise a little bit because some people might want one style map and some people might want a different style map. And so we might have to do is, you know, one server wipe. You know, half of the people are going to get the map that they wanted. And then the next server wipe, the other half of the people are going to get the map that they wanted. But there's no way for everybody to get what they want all the time, but we'll try to make sure that people are getting more of a map that they want on all the, the alternations of different map like orientations. All right, friends. I just want to say a huge thank you to all of you that came out tonight. And honestly, I just want to say something awesome because as you guys could probably understand, and a lot of you guys were probably thinking this before tonight, thinking that this was going to be an absolute chaotic disaster, right? You bring a bunch of people in the same room, let them all share their ideas. Obviously, we're all aware on the internet, this can go very, very south. And I just want to say thank you for the fact that it didn't. I want to say thank you for all of you for being respectful. Um I think that this kind of stuff we did tonight does not happen often. And so I just want y'all to give a round of applause, a round of applause for yourselves because you guys were incredible. We are super grateful. Um we don't know if we'll do this in the future. Maybe we'll do one, you know, every time we go to do a, you know, a new map or whatever it might be. But sincerely, guys, thank you for everyone that came out tonight. It was well coordinated. You guys were respectful. Thank you for sitting your seats and sending me and calling. One last time, can we give it up for Photoshop Freak and the mods who worked so hard to run the server? Can we give it up? Let's go. You guys are beautiful. I appreciate you. All right, friends. I know you maybe didn't have time to answer all your questions. If you guys want, please send your feedback in the Discord feedback uh community and we will get back to you soon as we can. We love you guys so much. You guys are beautiful. Have a good night. Go let each other on fire. Do what you gotta do. Peace. In the first week of our custom Rust server, we've had over a hundred and fifty people join and we decided to host our first town hall Rust server meeting. They would let people come, sit in chairs, stand when they wanted to give their feedback, share their ideas, how we can make it better. And can you believe that a game that's normally toxic, they was order, people were respectful and they were actually kind? I want to encourage you, if you want to see what it's like to actually have a positive gaming experience, check out this video. This is an experience you're not going to want to miss.